Good to guess. Yeah, you guys ready? Everybody ready?
It is six thirty, yes, Bill, he's ready.
Yeah, and said, I said, how would you take her a little while?
Ready? Are you ready?
She's, she's calling. I mean, she's trying to be official.
I don't know why.
I'm ready. I don't pay attention to them.
I was paying attention to her either.
Good evening. Man, you guys are the faithful. So, welcome to our July Elizabethan City Schools Board of Education meeting. I hope everybody's having a wonderful summer. If you would, please stand, and Dr. Gardenhour is going to lead us in pledge and a moment of silence.
And, uh, the safety, we'd like to, before a moment of silence, we'd like to remember the Edgar Spain with, uh, your thoughts in first. Okay, so a moment of silence. Thank you. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Uh, do want to tell you, Dr. May is on his way. A shocker, he got held up at the hospital, bless his heart. So, uh, he'll be here soon, so we're just, he asked us to go ahead and get started without him. All right, that's the agenda. It's time for citizens to speak in accordance with Board Policy 1.404. Uh, Ms. Teresa Reddick, uh, has asked to speak before the board, so if you would come forward, and please state your name and address, please.
Good evening. Teresa Reddick, eleven twenty-seven Cedar Avenue, Elizabethan, Tennessee, three seven six four three. I am the president of the Douglas Illuminati Association, and I have this, uh, this evening, a spokesperson from the board that's going to speak on our behalf, Reverend Jeanette Clark.
My name is Reverend Jeanette Clark. My address is six oh nine Bingham Street, Elizabethan, Tennessee, three seven six four three, and I greet you in Jesus' name. And I come, first of all, with several things, but I need to share this with you before we get started. I was one of the last class members graduated from this school. And when I walked into the school place, and every time I have walked in here since it closed, my heart sinks. And it sinks because there is really lack of semblance that Douglas School ever existed. There's a few remnants around the room, but very few of what I knew as a student at Douglas School. And it troubles my heart. I just wanted you to know that. But it is a pleasure for us to be here tonight because we want to ask some questions. Utilization of the Douglas School for community activities, is it available?
Yes, ma'am. And, uh, if, if we just want to take each question, if you want to read that, and I'll try to give you a little response. We've, one thing I want to say about Douglas School Association that, that you have, is we appreciate it so much, you, uh, coming forward and sending us your requests ahead of time. And, uh, it's going to be a model for what the board's going to use from this point forward, and how we have, uh, we have entities like yourself that will come and do that with the board. So, we appreciate you giving us the opportunity so we could have some answers to the questions you have tonight, okay? Okay, the first one, to address that one, the facilities use form is what we use for every employee, every outside entity that wants to use a facility, they have to fill out a form. And that form is done because we have, uh, to meet the letter of the law and our insurance and those types of things. And we want to keep a good accountability of who's there, coming and going, and that sort of thing. But the, uh, school activities and community events, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that form would be made available to us?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Damage to the mural, are, are plans being made to restore the mural that's on the back of the school with the fingerprints or the handprints of all the Douglas Illuminati and children? That is a historic moment for us, and we would not want it to be removed.
We have no problem with that. It's been there. We repainted the building, it was about two years ago, and we left the mural because we know that that's a symbol for the community. So, uh, we left that there. We have no problem with you restoring that if you wanted to come in and, and I, we, as you know, I hear recently we had some vandalism back there, so we had to cover that up. There were just a few handprints that were covered up during that. We filed a police report during that time, and we're still looking for the person who had done that. Uh, but we have not had, uh, a lot of luck with that at this point, but we're fine with you restoring that if you'd like to.
Okay. The after-school program initiated by the late Connie Baker included computers, tables, chairs, and other items left in the room. What are plans for that room? And what is planned for the equipment left in the room? And who does it belong to?
Okay. Um, this is the best that we can, we can say at this point. We took an inventory, we kind of went down and looked at what was there. Our best guess at this point, the computers were property of Ms. Baker. She either had donations, or she contacted outside entities to help her purchase those. They are still in that room, and they're sitting on the brown tables that are there. The two brown tables, the big, large tables are ours. There are some white tables that we believe are, all, were also purchased at some point by someone with Mrs. Baker. The chairs are ours, um, that are there. So, that's pretty much, now, there were some other things that were, were in the room. And there's a little storage room that's back there, adjacent from the bathroom, that's at the, uh, I guess, would that be the north wall? All the way at the very end, closest to the door where you would come in the kitchen that's there. Adjacent there, there's a, there's some things that were left there, and we put them back in storage just to make sure that they, uh, didn't go walking anywhere. So, they're there.
Okay, so, do you as a Elizabethan City School Board have any plans for an after-school program to resume here at the school for this community?
Okay, we do not have any plans of that, uh, at this point. We run a separate, through a grant program. We run an ESP program for children, has tutoring, events, and all that type of thing that are there. We have, uh, at this point, that's where we would send all of our children because it's cost-effective for children, uh, to go. I do not know what the fee is at this point. Yeah, so, yeah, based on income, and then twenty-five dollars a month would probably be what it would be. So, it's, it's a great, uh, we have a lot of activities there, a lot of homework help and support that's there.
So, kids that are in need of that, the instructors in the, in the classroom will make that available or recommend those children for that program? Or how does that system work?
Okay, Mr. Van Hoss, do you want to talk a little bit about that? He, Mr. Van Hoss runs our program. He may need to share the microphone with you for just one second.
So, uh, the, to answer the question, the program, uh, it's for K through eight students. Uh, and we bus students in the afternoon from the other two elementaries, west side and east side, to the location at Harrah McCormick. And that's the program that's twenty-five dollars a month. And again, there's a, there's an income eligibility similar to free and reduced lunch. That's scale slide, so it could be someone could come absolutely free. Um, and there's also, again, a program at the junior high that's actually, uh, more cost-effective than that. You know, I can't remember exactly what the fee is. It may be fifty dollars for the entire year. So, uh, they get a snack, uh, there's a tutoring time, and then they have some organized activities that they do as well. They take a day and focus on a particular academic area, uh, in addition to the time for tutoring. So, they have a tutoring time every day to work on homework. And then they have, you know, like, Monday and Wednesday may be math day. And so, they're going to do some kind of activity that revolves around math, and so on. Um, yes, teachers have the freedom to recommend students, and then, again, just anyone is more than welcome to, to enter the program.
What's the use for our community activities? Was, is that particular room?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it available?
At this point, yes, it is available.
Is it functional?
Um, I'd say, right now, we have some stor, we're using for storage. I know we have some computers that we're getting ready to outsource out, and, uh, we, we're limited for storage space, so we are using it for storage, but still functional. I think if, uh, someone wanted to use that for, uh, a function, or wanted to have a meeting in there, there's chairs and tables in there, um, at this point, yes.
But not for dinner?
Uh, it would just depend, if the computers were cleaned out, uh, the, like, Mrs. Baker's computers, could people sit down and have a meal that was brought in? Probably so.
Do you, do you already have plans for that room?
I, I definitely won't be apologetic about the fact that if we need space, and we're looking to do that or build offices, that that would be a desirable place for us here. I, I know, I know that that's, you know, we, we want to try to be good neighbors and that type of thing, but we also, we, this is a place of business, and we, we have to look at every available space. And as Ms. Peters has brought up so many times, uh, you know, our available space is, is dwindling. But that doesn't mean that if you wanted to have a dinner, that there are not other places within the school system that that could be done. If you wanted to, uh, for instance, wanted to fill out facilities use form and do it in one of the cafeterias that we have, we have other organizations that do just that. And so, maybe not that exact room, but maybe a room in another building would better suit that. So, and we, I would definitely approve that, so.
I have another question, but it's not on this list. I hope you will permit me to ask.
Sure.
You, if you graduated from Elizabethan High School, and another entity came in and took over that school, how would you feel, and what would be your desire to have a place in that building to represent you as a high school student? How would you feel?
Personally?
Yes.
After I graduated high school, I never stepped foot back in my high school. Uh, but I, what I think you're trying to get at is to tell me that it means something to you.
It means something to all of us.
And I understand that.
And, and do you, and do you know also, when I, um, was researching a lot of things and going online and looking for information, for instance, if I as a student of Douglas High School needed my, um, my transcript, where would I go? Where would that information be? Because I graduated from this school and later went to a second, went to ETSU and graduated from Milligan, et cetera, mine are available. But there are other people that do not have that. Do you have those files available?
Yeah, but that has been the discussion of the week. Ms. Perkins and I have, has spent some time, I've talked with people, twenty-plus-year employees, to see if those types of things existed even to the time that they, they started working here. And at this point, we haven't, not that it doesn't exist, at this point, we have not, um, located any of those records. Uh, but what I can tell you is, it's a common practice for all public entities to purge records at periods of time. Such as, if we had a child who was special needs, it would just say, what would happen would be, at five to seven years, the school system purges those records. But what we do is, we put in the paper, we're going to purge records. Anyone that would like to come and receive their records, uh, you may do that. And, um, that's been a common practice here, and probably in every other public entity that's out there. So, to answer your question, are, do they exist? I talked with Ms. Perkins, and maybe you can respond to that. She's been here how many years, thirty? Thirty, thirty plus?
One thing that I would like to clarify is that we don't know specifically where the entire school record is. I do have the attendance cards that were used for a lot of stu, people, not all of them. Uh, but not only for, um, the Douglas School, but for some of the other schools that are no longer in existence here in Elizabethan also. So, those are available, and, uh, from time to time, we get requests, and we are more than happy to provide copies of those at anybody that needs them. That's not a problem.
Yeah.
Okay, at one point, I understand that Douglas School was under the supervision of the Carter County system. Could it be there?
I moved here in nineteen seventy-six, and I believe that what you're speaking of occurred before I came here. I didn't come to work here in nineteen seventy-six, so I couldn't answer that accurately. Um, if you want either Dr. Gardenhour, and I would be happy to make an inquiry to the Carter County board to see if we can clarify that, but, no, ma'am, I, I couldn't answer you exactly on that.
Okay. Also, we had trophies and other memorabilia that we would like to know. And, uh, please, understand this. It is not just the Elizabethan City School System's, um, fault, if I must use that word, but it is also our parents and the community, and the principals that left here that did not secure those things for us so that we could have a place. In most high schools that have been closed across the country, there has been a dedicated area for that closing school to have their things in that school, like this building. But we have nothing. We have a semblance over there in that corner. When I come down the hall, all I see is Elizabethan High School and a few splattered people from this community. That, maybe you didn't go back to your high school after you graduated, but there was a special bond here. And when I graduated, that was the saddest day of my life, simply because I knew that part of my heritage would be lost. Integration was good. However, it lacked a lot. It lacked in keeping the unity within the community, and to allow us to be notified as who we are. We are more than the color of our skin. And I can attest to the fact that when I graduated from this school, I had every academic course that was given. And we didn't have an option to pick and choose what we wanted to take. But we had it, and I'm the better for it because I have graduated not only from Elizabethan Technical School as an LPN, but Milligan College with a BS degree, with Walter State as a registered nurse. I have a master's and a bachelor's degree in biblical study, and presently working on my doctorate degree. So, I can tell you that there is a lot of heritage in this community. And I can also tell you that you don't have very many black people on your staff within the city system. And so, my question is, you're here in the midst of this community, but we're nowhere in the midst of this community. So, we want to see if we can work together to rectify that.
Okay.
Ms. Clark, one thing that I would like to sort of clarify for you, when I initially came to work here, uh, this was Sequoia School.
I understand that.
And when I came at that point, I honestly and truly don't remember seeing anything even then, at that point. But on a different path, I do want you to understand that I, what you're saying because I graduated from Bluefield State College, which is a predominantly black college.
That is it.
Uh, some of my closest friends happened to be other than Caucasian. And I understand that need for that. And being a history major, I think it's important that we keep those memories alive. But I honestly and truly don't know. Uh, Mr. Hutchins mentioned that he knew of one place at the high school that possibly we might be able to look. He thought that there was like a little storage area down there. And we are planning to do that, to look, to see. But honestly and truly, when I came here to work with Sequoia, I don't remember seeing anything from that point on.
I can, I can appreciate that because I, um, I was not here. I was working out of state. And so, I can appreciate that, but I can also, um, look at, at the community itself that did not pursue, and see that it was an important thing for all of us. Because now, we reach back, and I look at the history, and I've researched the history, and we have two different names. One person is saying that school was named after, uh, one person, another one is saying another. So, it, it's just ironic that I can't say to my son, and my son's son, and his children to me about my life in this area, in this school.
Yes, ma'am, I understand what you're saying.
That's, that's, that's the travesty of it all. So, I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me and to answer those questions, and I look forward to working with you.
Yes, ma'am. And, and what I'll say is, Mr. Van Hoss is our liaison that will be working with you. Uh, he has for a number of years. And so, you know, if you need to reach out to him to get conversation started and talk with him, please do so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Also, one of the nice things about, you know, meetings like this, it's a public meeting. We have the media here, they're streamed. There might be somebody who knows something. And so, let's hope that, uh, maybe we can use this venue, uh, to help you to maybe get the word out, so.
Okay, I appreciate it. And by the way, this used to be our gym. Thank you for coming, and we hope you'll keep in touch with us.
Anybody else?
I'm Elaine Wash. I live, uh, next door, eight twenty Watoga Avenue. And, um, I'm also a member of the Douglas the Douglas Alumni Association, but right now, I'm just speaking for myself. And just listening to Reverend Clark and, and your responses to her questions and, and your comments and all, and my thing, the whole time I was sitting there is like, well, what do you, what can you do for us? And that's what I want to know from, from this point off, is what, what are you going to do for us? You know, this is our home. When we have our Douglas, our reunions, they come right here, right here in the ball field that we used to call it, not the park, but the ball field, and this is where everybody comes to. And when we have our little dinners and whatever, it's right here. And so, you know, you take that away from us, and what do we have? Just like she said, we have nothing. We have nothing. And having a dinner at, at some other school or someplace doesn't mean anything. They want to come back home, and that's right here at Douglas School. And, you know, when, when segregation took place and all this, the desegregation, you know, I was a little kid and I didn't care, I was just running around. And, you know, now that I'm an adult, I look back on this and I think, God, why did our parents allow that to happen? That, that things are misplaced, they're gone, and, you know, some of these things, there's nothing you can do about, and there's nothing that anybody else can do about, they're gone. So, my question is, is that from here, this point on, what can you do for us? We want to stay home. We don't want that room to be turned into offices. And, and it, it, you know, regardless of, if that's what you need, you need some office space or, or whatever, we don't want that. It's just, I'm just speaking plain and simply, that that's not what we want to happen. That's not what I want to happen. I want that room back there where we've been doing this for whatever number of years. I want that room so that when we have our, our reunions and our block parties, which we got one coming up, August the eighth, we want to come right here. We want to, we, we'd like to go in there and, and prepare our, our meals and, and to the ball field, just like we've always done, and, and keep that. And I just feel like that that's the least you could do for us, that that's the least you could do for us, is let us keep that. And, you know, if you need some storage space or some office space, find someplace else. Give us that, at least, because that's all we have left. So, you know, just trying to preserve what little bit of history we got, to me, that's the starting point. So, that, that's my personal request, is that give that back to us, let us have it, let us continue to, to use it for our community purposes and, and let it be. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to me.
It's time to approve the consent and regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, you have a second?
Second.
Got any questions or comments about the agenda? Nope. Hearing none, item on the floor is to approve the consent and regular agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Bargnauer, got anything you want to tell us?
I would read the personnel update, but we have decided to make our meetings more efficient, so we appreciate similar to the board looking at that, so that's listed for you there, for all the board members, and we'll move on to my report. I wanted to make sure to welcome Dr. Myra Newman to our staff. She comes to us most recently from Bristol City Schools. I've known her for many years, we have full confidence that she's going to do a great job, she already is doing a great job, has been a great welcome addition to our staff, so welcome Dr. Newman. And want to inform the board about a really great program that we're going to be starting this year. If you know our star tennis player, Dani Vines, her mom, Julie, contacted us from the Health Department about providing free dental services for our elementary students. And so, we're going to, with the help of Mr. Hutchins and the transportation crew, be busing students down there during the year this year for free dental care. They do anything from sealants to cleanings to restorations for students, and that will provide some much-needed healthcare for our children, and it costs nothing for them. And it will be an opt-in program, so parents will opt in if, if they feel that that is something their child needs, and we'll take care of everything for them and make sure that they're taken care of when they go home. Mr. Van Huss, would you like to give us a stadium update? Give us an update on the stadium project and?
Wake up.
What time is it?
Things continue to go extremely well on that project. Of course, we had groundbreaking last week for the band and music room, and that was a great day as well. Press box arrived two or three days ago, and it's been set in place, so the next thing, they'll wrap some metal around that to finish that up, continuing to work on hookups and things there, continuing around the front of the stadium with sidewalks, steps, ramps, things like that. So, it just continues to go extremely well, planning for our opening events, which we hope the whole community can come to, again, on Thursday, September the third, we will have a meet-your-seat event in conjunction with Taste of Carter County, and that entity, they, the Chamber of Commerce has agreed to split the proceeds from that between the, with the Band Boosters and the Athletic Parent Organization, so we encourage people to take advantage of that as well. We'll have some special events that evening, we'll have, we're trying to put together maybe an alumni soccer game, as well as the band cheerleaders, football team, soccer team, we'll, we'll do some activities there as well. So, should be an exciting night for anyone to come out and, and kind of take a look at the stadium, but things continue to go extremely well. We're excited for our community.
Thank you. Our fundraising efforts continue to be successful. We've been able to raise about ten thousand dollars in the last two weeks, and we've had a lot of businesses and, that just simply love our children, and they're showing their support, and we, we've had a lot of success there. And one of the great things that we're going to be able to do, a lot of people have seen our large donors, but what we would like to do with the help of the media is to celebrate some of those donors that, from their business, have given from their heart, and some smaller amounts, but they're buying advertising and different things in there, so we're going to try to make sure that we, over the next few weeks, give them an opportunity to come and have their picture made, maybe at the Star or the Press, and also celebrate what they're doing, so we'll put that in the paper to recognize those businesses on that. Well, I thank the board for a very successful board retreat this week. It was a welcome time, just, we really covered a lot of information in a short period of time, and I felt we worked together well, and I appreciate the board's support and help and willingness to make the needed changes that make us a better organization. So, thank you for coming this week. Thank you.
Anybody else have any reports or anything they want to share? So, Dr. G, you're going to Summerlin Institute?
I will be, and I'll bring that back to the, to the board, that, that'll be coming this coming week, and I'll bring an update to the board at next month's meeting, and try to make it brief, but I'll send a lot of the information on email to all of you for the updates.
All right, let's move on to the regular agenda. First item is approve memorandum of understanding between Elizabethan City Schools and Nyswonger College and Career Consortium, beginning July sixteen, twenty fifteen, and ending either June thirtieth, twenty twenty, or when replaced by an amended MOU signed by each of the parties involved or upon the mutual agreement of the parties. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Next, have a second?
Second.
The Nyswonger Foundation has been a great community partner with Elizabethan City Schools. They have invested about half a million dollars into the school system over probably about a ten-year period, and they have, they have been tremendous, and so, the benefit of us doing this this evening will be the fact that they have professional development for teachers and administrators. They also have specific institutes for teachers, especially in hard-to-staff areas, math and science and so forth, so, and for our sixteen hundred dollars that we'll pay to be a part of it, that's free for our teachers. So, it's a small, small investment for us, but a large return and a large return over many years, so.
By having questions?
The sixteen hundred, is that an annual fee? Is it?
There'll be an annual fee. It also gives our students the opportunity to pay for courses that they have, that they've developed, online courses, and they will pay per seat to have those, but for a high-level student, that may be one course that they really would need for a path that they want to take for their career, so it's very helpful, so.
Have you? Item on the floor is to approve memorandum of understanding between Elizabethan City School System, Nyswonger College and Career Consortium, beginning July sixteen, twenty fifteen, and ending either June thirtieth, twenty twenty, or when replaced by an amended MOU signed by each of the parties involved or upon the mutual agreement of the parties. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, approve three-year agreement for school nutrition online payment system with Heartland Payment Systems. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
This is an exciting, this I'm excited about. As my daughter is graduating this year.
The Heartland Payment System is the company that our current point-of-sale software in our schools, that's the recommended vendor to work with what we have in place, that's why we chose Heartland. This will be no cost to the school system, parents will pay a processing fee if they use the online payment system. So, we're hoping that with our attendance software of being able to notify parents when a child's balance in their cafeteria is falling, that maybe they'll just then go online, make a payment, and make the convenience there for them, so. Our kids at our elementary schools, yep, we have free breakfast and lunch at all elementary schools, but still some of them will want to buy extra milk or a snack or something, so parents won't have to send that money with those small kids to school, they can do that online, or, you know, you don't have to trust your, my daughter to not spend the money somewhere else to actually get it to the cafeteria. So, we really think this will be a great benefit for our students and parents, and hope to maybe in the future have something for tuition or C payment schedule, but those are not as many during the year.
Thank you.
Any have any questions or comments?
No, I think this is great. I know, oh gosh, yeah, I remember sending
I do too.
Those little envelopes to you, afraid they got there. Yeah, we live in a world now where you pay everyone.
Yeah. And the teachers are having to, you know, give it to them, so this is exciting.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right. Approve three-year agreement for school nutrition online payment system with Heartland Payment Systems. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, approve agreement between Elizabethan City Schools and Carter County Health Department for administration of influenza vaccination clinics in all schools. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
This, of course, is a opportunity for our students to be more healthy, the fact that they can get a, a influenza vaccination, so anytime that we can do that for our students, it's, it's wonderful, so. We've done this how many years now, gentlemen? It's probably been about three or four years we've had this clinic available, so it operates very well. And our coordinated school health, Regina Wilder kind of staffs that for the school's side for us.
What percentage of students take part in this?
We, we can find out, but there are a lot. You'd get very surprised.
Very good.
There are a lot of students who do it.
The only question I have is, I noticed their stipulation is to provide at least two staff members to assist health department staff during influenza vaccination clinics. Now, is, is there a nurse at every school now?
Yes ma'am.
But this says at least two, and knowing how busy the staff is all day, I'm wondering if that's even possible, to have people available all day.
They, what happens is, one of the things when we re-appropriated staff, probably about six or seven years ago, we have made contact to have a half, or a half-time person at each grade level, and so for that day, that's probably going to be their job, you know, they, they're in and out very quickly, so it's not, we did a trial a couple of years ago, and it was, it took us probably about a week to get through, and we've, it's mechanized now, they have it down, and our people know what to do.
So, it's in place?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Item on the floor is to approve agreement between Elizabethan City Schools and Carter County Health Department for administration of influenza vaccination clinics in all schools. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, approve first reading of board policy three-point-five-zero-zero, food service management as revised. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this?
I guess I really didn't understand what the difference between for a limited number of days, and then you put up to a limited amount on this page here. Crossed out for a limited number of days.
You're talking about on the second page?
Um, page two or four. Right. I, I don't understand how that changes that.
Well, if it goes up-
Is this just miracle law? Is this something that came from that?
These, these are all proposed as Perkins from.
This is what the state nutrition coordinator recommended to Mary Ann Williams, who is, works with Ms. Wilson at our level, that she wanted the wording changed to, to reflect some of the federal rulings also that have changed, and so, she, these were suggested at that level.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
There's a lot of stuff, but, you know, I guess this is just one of those keeping us up to date and current with the TPA.
We're going to be having an audit this year for our school nutrition program, and this is just sort of housekeeping, a way of the policies to make sure that we are compliant prior to our audit, and have that in place.
It sounds like federal language.
Ah, how'd you tell? Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right. Item on the floor is to approve first reading of board policy three-point-five-zero-zero, food services management as revised. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, approve first reading of board policy five-point-one-one-seven, procedure for granting tenure as revised. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, you have a second?
Just taking it.
Thank you.
Obviously, this is a pretty short change, but one of the things they've done is to make sure that we are notifying teachers not granted tenure within five business days of the last instructional day of the school year, and we were happy to announce that we were able to do that this year already, so we're in a good groove on that, and we have a lot of teachers who are very thankful we had done that.
Dr. G, how, how do you communicate this with staff? Is this in a leave-staff handbook, or?
We, we've, we've done different things over the years. The way we did it this year is that if we're communicating with the teacher, it's not going to be rehired. We had the principal have to prove to me that they had had conversations with a teacher to give them an opportunity with deficiencies and give them an opportunity to get better, or we would not rehire them. But those conversations happened early on in the year, and then after that, at that time, they delivered the letters to them. I allowed the, the people to be able to come up, and I was the second line of defense, they needed to talk about their issues with me, they'd come and sit down and speak with me about them, and I had some teachers do that. But the great thing that happened this year was, when the conversations happened in December or around that time period, I was doing personnel at that time, they came and talked to me then, and I felt like that was a, it's a better time to talk, because, you know, if we're trying to work out issues, they're going on with a teacher, and we have that time, it's not going to be a surprise when the time comes. Either they're going to be able to do the things that we've asked them to do, or they're not. And, and so, but I feel that that's a more fair process for us to do.
That's correct.
And so, and our administrators, they, you know, they do a great job, and I think that they, they have those conversations, they're not easy ones to have when a teacher is not performing, but- is not performing, but they've been willing to sit down and do that, and I think it's made us a lot stronger.
So no surprises.
I-
And there are a lot of teachers who are extremely happy with the, with this process, that you're willing to take the time and sit down and talk to them.
Sure. Well, there, there are those valuable resource besides our students, so we want to make sure that we're, we have the best people in-house that we can have for our students.
Any other questions or comments? Item on the floor, approve first reading of board policy five point one one seven, procedure for granting tenure as revised. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item, approve first reading of board policy five point two zero one, separation practices for non-tenured teachers as revised. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, you have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Pretty much the same change is just reflected in this policy as well, as the one prior, so it's the same, same thing.
Questions or comments? Item on the floor, approve first reading of board policy five point two zero one, separation practices for non-tenured teachers as revised. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item, approve first reading of board policy five point three zero two, sick leave as revised. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, this is, this is one, glad Dr. May's coming in, because this is one that-
Perfect item.
He had had some questions about the last time we went through this. One of the questions for the board that came up in the discussion was the fact that we had some language that we're a little uncomfortable with. We wanted to make it a little more broad to include some other medical support professionals, such as a physician's assistant or a nurse practitioner, because often when people go to the doctor, that's who they may see, they may not see an actual doctor to get a physician's certificate, so we changed that language to make it more of what we felt that was, you know, to your liking. So I hope everyone's-
So what, what the language says is that it doesn't have to be a doctor's certificate, it can be a, like someone from the school or a health practitioner? I wasn't clear on how it changed.
How it changed was a physician or physician's assistant or a nurse practitioner. We, we had a physician's certificate is what we had in the past, so that kind of limited it to the physician, but now it'll be those people, I think what Dr. May brought up the last time was, they may not see a doctor when they go in, and so it broadens that out to say, who would, who would they likely see at a clinic, or, you know, at their physician's office, they may not see an actual doctor, so these are people that we had trust maybe that could make the recommendation or give us, give us insight into what's going on with that employee, whether they were sick or not.
Did you say that this five-day requirement was pretty much similar to what other districts are doing?
It's, it's more liberal. When I, when I worked in Kingsport City Schools, it was three days. Johnson City is the same way. We could go and look at a lot of different places, but I think our policy's pretty liberal at five days, so. But we feel comfortable with it, gives them enough time. I think Ms. Peters, you brought up the last time about they may have the flu, or, or something like that, but we figure after five, the consecutive days is the big, the big kicker in there, so we feel-
Well, I guess I'm just uncomfortable because I think that, I know that they're subject to abuse, the sick day policy, but I would like to think that we trust and have faith in our teachers enough to, if they say they're sick, they're sick. And if there's an abuse, then we deal with it. But I guess I'd like us to be more forward than other districts, and, you know, like have more faith and trust in our teachers that they're not going to abuse this policy.
Ms. Peters, this policy doesn't apply just to teachers. It's for every employee in the system.
Well, right. I didn't, I just didn't mean just teachers.
To clarify that, so that some of them wouldn't think that we were just applying the policy just to the teaching staff.
Everyone, right.
That's correct.
I just think it's a good message to send to your personnel that, that you trust them, that you don't have to get a doctor's note if you've been sick a week, but I understand why it's necessary, but I'm just uncomfortable with it.
When you supported it, or when we discussed it last time, I was, my concern was it had to be a doctor, and that's not the common, it's getting less and less common that people can get in on short notice with a physician, it's usually an assistant. Licensed medical personnel was one of the things that I thought, my fear is that it, it makes them have to go to a physician and pay out of their pocket a fee and cost the system more because our insurance is paying it. And there are a few conditions that you would be out for seven days and it not be related to something that you need med, need to see the doctor, and now the only reason you're going to seek care and access the system is, is simply because you're having to get a certificate. However, we addressed that, and like having faith in our teachers, I want to have faith in our administrators as well, who say maybe, not shall be. And that was the key language for me at the last meeting, was we incorporated the principal may, not shall. If it had said may or shall, then it would be a different language and wording. They may require it. Now, the one thing I think we probably should clarify, or would be a nice way to clarify it, is to say that they need to let them know, not require it after the five days. If they're going to require it, they probably need to let them know so they can go to the doctor, because there may be, if they called in and said, are you going to need a certificate for this, because I'm, I have the flu, and I know I have the flu, my father's a doctor and, or whatever, my sister who doesn't live here and can't provide that for me is, you know, I don't know, I'm trying to think of some situation, but the, the reality is this is an eighty-twenty situation, or ninety-ten. Ninety percent of the time, this is going to be fine, because five days, by the point you're that ill that you're out for five days, it's something that you seek, you have sought care for almost always. And I have faith in our administrators to say maybe. So for me personally, that fixed my biggest issues with it.
But doesn't, excuse me, it still says, may be required in support of any claim for sick leave, and shall be required in support of any claim for sick leave pay for absence of five days.
Oh, it does say shall, then.
It's still in here.
The shall is still in there. I thought we had the may.
Nope, it's still there.
Go back in.
That's why I was concerned that that was still there.
Okay.
Shall be required, it's on the line under medical certification.
Would you like at this point to make a motion that we change that word?
Well, I would, I'll make the motion that we amend this and then call it to vote with the amendment that maybe shall, is replacing shall be under that line. And did you see shall be in any other location?
No, it's only-
It's only that one spot.
It's right here.
Yeah.
I found that one.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the shall be is what I thought they changed to maybe. That gives you a lot of wiggle room if you know it's not an abuser of that, and shall, but it does put them on the notice that they, they might be accused of using it in, at one time or another. It's not numbered, but it is under, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six.
No, 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 on the side where it says, um-
Line eleven. Line eleven?
Line eleven.
Line eleven, shall be should be stricken and said maybe.
Where does it say line eleven?
You can't see where it's, it's attached.
Okay.
I can't.
Oh, you did.
Yeah, I don't know if that's actually the number on the page, but. Here.
The one good thing about paper.
Mine's scanned in.
I don't think it's down there.
Oh, it is.
No, but it's the element lined down.
Okay, well, we're going to go with that. All right, so we're going to word it as, we're going to say the amended motion to replace the word.
Shall with may.
Since, I want to make sure that I'm on the same page that you are, so would you read it to me, the way that you are suggesting to change it, an amendment?
On line ten, starting on line ten, medical certification may be required in support of any claim for sick leave, and on line eleven, continuing there, and may be required in support of any claim for sick leave pay for absences of five or more consecutive days. It's that line right there, where I would replace shall with may.
So you want, that's, that's what I was clarifying.
That's my motion to amend the prior. It hasn't been seconded, if anybody?
Second.
I guess my concern is the long-term that we do need to require, the twenty-day, twenty-five-day. To me, that should be a well, will be required, not shall be required. And I guess that's an administrative decision, and I guess it's just a matter of administrative procedure.
Yeah, there aren't any other days listed. I understand what you're saying, but it's, it doesn't have anything about long-term.
Right, and right.
Beyond five days.
Right.
Beyond that time, normally if we have an employee has that, that issue, we'll, we'll bring them, Ms. Perkins will deal with the absence of that.
I mean, I'm good with it, I just, I guess I want it to be very clear to every employee, so, yeah, I'm good.
We try to make it clear to the employees that if they are out on that length of time, you know, that if they want to, they certainly have the right to investigate, to see if they qualify for family medical aid at that time.
That's what I was just thinking.
Only concern I have is when you put may instead of shall, it puts the burden on this supervisor, the person to determine, well, do I require this person, or do I not require it? It's putting the burden on that particular person to be consistent and make that judgment call, instead of spelling it out for them, what they should. That's the only concern that I would have.
That's actually exactly the point, is where do you want to put the burden?
Yeah, you're putting the burden on that, on it being the principal or whatever administrator has to make that call, do I require or not require?
And as you know, us being even-handed in all employment decisions is a very, very difficult and very important.
How about if-
We're not giving a clear signal from our standpoint as to how that burden is, is to be handled.
Would it be better if we said shall be for five, for seven consecutive workdays instead of five? That would require it to really be nine consecutive days, because they would have to be sick over a weekend, even if you said six workdays that were consecutive, it would require, instead of five days, it would require two more on that weekend, so that you would be working days. But at five, you're within one week's period of time. I'm just wondering if that would, instead of saying shall, or, or instead of saying may, maybe that motion will be defeated, and would that be an alternative, is to say, extend the number of days by one, such that it would now extend over a weekend?
Well, I kind of think that, that's a whole nother issue.
Just lengthens your time.
Right. I think it's, from my, what I'm, from my perspective, it doesn't solve the problem. I, I think that the administrators, we should think that the administrators would know their staff well enough to know whether someone was abusing the sick leave privilege or not. I, I would, again, have faith in my administrators that they could make that judgment call. They have to make judgment calls every day as principals.
Are we giving them enough, I mean, so if you, let's say some, you felt like someone was abusing it, do they have anything to fall back on? Like, is there anything in our policies or procedures that they could say, well, you know, just as a, I mean, thinking, HR coming out and me going, okay, where is it in writing that they could actually fall back on, rather than just being a judgment call? Are we giving them anything to, to fall back on?
If you're asking my opinion, I think that we need to put some teeth into it. Remember, though, this is probably going to affect about five percent of employees. It's not going to be highly used, or, because we have great employee attendance, and they care about their jobs. So I have a lot of faith there, but for the ones that we do need to use this with, it is, it's always better that the policy would, I, I think that we need to be fair, but we also need to, if we're going to have a sick leave policy, it needs to be somewhat defined, because when you, when you have an employee that may be underperforming, and then sick leave becomes an issue, and remember, this is, this is a per occurrence thing that happens, and so they could go for five consecutive days, and then they may then take another five consecutive days. So this is a, really a per occurrence, and it, as I think Mr. Fleming was saying, was, you know, maybe there's a limit on the end of the total number of days, and I think that, that other school systems do have that as well, so this is my thought.
I think it's Ms. Perkins said, too, it's key that this is employee policy, not just professional staff, it's an employee policy.
That's correct.
Because of board, we need to get clear direction as to how we want it to be.
We can always come back, if something, if it isn't working, I mean, whatever we do, we can always come back and revisit it.
We have quite a few administrators here, maybe it would be nice to hear what they think.
Sure.
Since this involves you, what, what do you think about this? Any of you?
Well, I agree with you, we know who you said to talk to. But I think if you not have that, may.
So you're saying may instead of shall?
You would like for the burden to be put on you to make the judgment call. And I understand that, I understand.
John, Richard, what about just system-wide employees? Bus drivers, cafeteria, I mean, does this, does this work?
Who's in charge of them now?
It's, it's not been an issue with, with bus drivers. And to the best of my knowledge, this has been a policy that I've, I've been here twenty-seven years, and it's been a policy that you hear very little about, you know, as far as that goes, so, you know, we're blessed here, as Dr. Gardner has indicated, we don't have people that abuse it, very, very few, and the ones, as Mr. Wright said, the ones that do, the administrators know who they are.
Do you need a second on your amendment?
You need a second on the amendment? We haven't voted on the amendment yet.
Oh.
But I do want to say, I'm going to play devil's advocate again. I love to turn it around now, but seriously, the-
Why do you not come to?
Here it comes.
Okay, so the issue between may and shall, you make really good point, you almost, you may have switched my ver, my view of it, except for these guys, I hear what they're saying. My original thought is to leave things where you have the ability to do it, that's my original thought, and I, and in my gut, that's what I still stand by. But I will say, there is one problem, and that's when you mentioned the even-handedness. In the past, the system and this board and these administrators have been sometimes claimed for playing favorites, and I think that there is a real tangible risk, if we say may, that those administrators will be accused of not being fair-handed because they required it in one instance, but not in another. And I know that they know who the real offenders are, but I'm trying to balance that with the fact that a person who's ill for three days and thinks they'll be back tomorrow, gets up and on the way to work, throws up, and then calls their doctor's office, can't get in, and doesn't know if they will be required to go see a doctor, is now stuck taking Monday off to go to a doctor, because if they don't, they're going to have violated this policy. And while I'm hearing you say that's a small percentage, that's been in the backdrop, I know how hard it is for people to go to the physician, they have co-pays and deductibles. Last I checked, we're not paying a hundred percent on their visits, they have some skin in the game. And if I am requiring that employee to go see a doctor, then I'm requiring them to submit themselves to potentially costly visits, tests, and other things. Now granted, most of the time when someone's sick for five days, they're probably going in, and, and as a physician, I'd like to see them, but that's self-serving, but that's not, you know, that's just not really the right thing to make people go to a doctor, PA. What if their school nurse could be the one that could see them and say, yeah, they were really sick? And then you have a health care provider who's licensed, who can then do that, but then that puts that person into the mix of deciding, and then there's the potential for uneven-handedness or what have you. So I, I really am torn on this from shall and may, and I never thought I'd be arguing over shall and may.
We argue over it all the time.
But since my last name is May, I like to go with May, so.
And I agree with you, I was thinking, you know, the, the shall, but after hearing from these guys, if you're willing to take on the, the burden of making- And I agree with you, I was thinking, you know, the, the shall, but after hearing from these guys, if you're willing to take on the, the burden of making, you know, deciding, you know, or not to decide, you know, then that's, you know, that makes me think, you know, kind of the other way, so, you know, um, I, you, you, I'm kind of for myself.
Now, we've got second Mr. Wright in the back from the high school. Got your brother John, okay.
Well, granted that we've had three, any, anyone else feel differently?
Josh, yes, no.
Josh is no.
You're okay.
You know, and those are the primary ones responsible, I'm going to stick with my recommendation for may.
One thing, if that will give you any kind of piece about your vote, um, Mr. Alexander encouraged and Dr. Garnell does as well, uh, to keep excellent documentation. So, um, the administrators do know their staff and I think that if they felt like this was something that needed to be addressed, they would certainly call it to attention.
And we can revisit a year from now.
Sure.
Let's, let's go with it.
Okay, to make sure that I know what's going on, so what we will be voting on is an amended motion to replace the word shall with the word may in line eleven. Is that correct? All right, so now we'll read it for real. Item on the floor is to approve first reading of board policy five point, uh, yeah, five point three oh two, sick leave as revised with amended motion to replace word shall with the word may in line eleven. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And this is the first reading, so we revisit next month, is that correct? Okay.
Yep, so we've got time for our plate to change the line.
I can change my mind again, I may do it.
You may do it.
If we can vote before he gets here next to it.
We're going to, we're going to change his nameplate to be Dr. Grover Shall.
Dr. Shall.
Yeah, Dr. Shall.
I may be here.
We shall think about it. Next item is approved first reading of board policy six point two oh five, student assignments as revised. All the, uh, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, you have a second?
Second.
You can read the paragraph on this, this is about sexual perpetrators. Uh, obviously there probably has been a problem in the state with that and, uh, there's been a law change there. It's the Public Acts Law, uh, chapter two eighty-six on that. So we're just updating it to be compliant with the law.
Any questions or comments? I'm on the floor, approve first reading of board policy six point two oh five, student assignments as revised, revised. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, approve first reading of board policy six point four oh five, medicines as revised. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we, this, this particular one is for pancreatic insufficiency or, uh, cystic fibrosis. And one of the things, Teresa Robinson is a wonderful lady, uh, she works with all of her children's with individual health plans that we have. And we meet on those yearly once a child has that. And so this is just a, an update to that for the specific disease that they have for cystic fibrosis. So, um, but it's already a policy that we have in place and would be taken care of normally if we had a child with any type of disease or illness that would require that.
Any questions or comments?
Just a, a quick comment. Um, I don't know when, when a good time to review medicines are, but I think that there's probably a role for treating elementary and junior high schools a little different from people that are seventeen and eighteen, um, in terms of at least certain medic- there, this is a lot to put in and sometimes these kids that are in after-school programs, I, I see girls with painful menstrual cramps and they have Midol in their purse. Technically, if their purse is searched and they have a drug, they're part of the zero tolerance and a-
That's correct.
An honor student could be, um, harmed by our policy for something that's really not the intent. But the law is by the state of Tennessee and we have to be compliant with our policies. And so I, I don't know where the, maybe in a workshop, I'd like to kind of look and see is there a way to address that type of situation? But the physician in me understands that this is a really commonly done thing, is that people who have migraine headaches maybe, who are just trying to function in their, they're seventeen and eighteen years old and they're not elementary school children and their maturity is able to handle that. A girl on a, on a band trip to, to Disney might have with her a birth control pack that's only for cycle control. Or even if it's for, you know, birth control, she needs to have access to her medicines. And it's a violation of her privacy, I think, to have to require other people be involved with her decisions that she and her mother and the father have made about her healthcare. And there's certain exceptions that I don't know if there's a way around it, but I have concerns about that, especially with regard to privacy and, and, well, and I take care of females, but I think, I see those issues a lot where girls have to share with someone they're on it. And people presume that they're using them for contraception when frequently they're only on them just to regulate their periods and keep them, you know, comfortable. So I guess that's, that's, when I saw this, I wanted to talk about it, but I don't want to delay this one. I think we need to get the glucagon through, um, and the, uh, pancreatic insufficiency and cystic fibrosis. I mean, asthma, an EpiPen for a kid who gets, you know, bee stings, and those are common things now. And there's things modern medicine can make a huge difference in a kid with asthma. Uh, and that's already a state exception, but there's other things that aren't so urgent, but yet are violating their privacy if they have to have to share that with other people.
I agree totally, I've tried to enforce these policies as a school administrator in the past and it's very, very difficult.
Aren't you considered an adult when you're eighteen or am I wrong? I mean, when you're, when you're eighteen.
I'm even going down the middle school age though.
Yeah, but, yeah, you are, but we still have a policy that says it's a zero tolerance on campus.
I think this would be a great workshop and I think that we could-
We can't solve this one today.
And I do think this is one that would require, would require looking at some other school systems and talk to the attorney.
We'll have to have attorneys on this one because those are state laws.
As, as a mother of two daughters, I, there's a lot of things, any parent can understand, I think this is something that if we could, if we could do something to, with this, this would be a really good one to spend some time on, so, yeah.
This is once again administrative level, level-headedness.
Yep.
Well, zero tolerance is another one of those laws that sounds good, but it's-
Sounds great.
It's totally-
You think of extremes.
It's usually a knee-jerk reaction to something too.
That's right.
So I call it, the question on this one.
Okay. All right, item on the floor, approve first reading of board policy six point four oh five, medicines as revised. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, over to the changes, we have three more to look at. Uh, approve first reading of board policy two point eight zero zero, expenditure of funds as revised. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, you have a second?
Second.
This is a, for Ms. Wilson, cash management is one of those things, normally it's, uh, it's kind of comes and goes, uh, as the years go by. But they want us to develop a, a procedure for cash management and this just basically is getting us up to speed with the law and what we're doing. And we do have great procedures thanks to her and, uh, you know, they're very restrictive. And I think, you know, we're even trying to make ours, uh, what we're doing, uh, operate better and be more restrictive. And so, um, she does a great job of that.
Anybody having questions, comments? All right, item on the floor, approve first reading of board policy two point eight zero zero, expenditure of funds as revised. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, approve first reading of board policy two point eight oh five, purchasing as revised. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, you have a second?
Second.
Uh, this is basically a, a new ad for federal grant programs, uh, making sure the director has procedures in place for disbursement of funds and making sure they're approved prior to, and our procedure already takes care of that, so.
Any questions or comments? I'm on the floor, it's approved first reading of board policy two point eight oh five, purchasing as revised. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Last, approve change order number zero zero two for the Elizabethan High School Athletic Complex. Can I get a motion, uh, yes, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, second? All right.
Okay, this is, uh, one of the last things we'll have, if not the last. Uh, this is our signage package I sent out to the board today, uh, let them look at some of the examples of the signage that we have to have for, uh, that. And so, uh, we're asking for your consideration and approval of that this evening.
Now, this one, this project has not had a, an awful lot of these, we've been very fortunate.
We've been very fortunate, we're getting close to the end, so, uh, we're hoping this is it.
Compliments to all the administration.
Yeah, you guys have done a great job.
Mr. Van Hoss, uh-
Now let's not, remember what I said at the end of that.
Yeah, we're not saying-
No longer, this, this is me and him, no longer.
This is great and, and Mr. Trent, we've all had a little share in the wheel, so.
Anybody having questions or comments on this? All right, approve, uh, I'm on the floor, approve change order number zero zero two for the Elizabethan High School Athletic Complex. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held Thursday, uh, August the twentieth, six thirty PM in the Mac Pierce Boardroom. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, have a wonderful-